This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. It is 6:30 PM on July 9, 2020. We'll call our meeting to order once we establish a quorum of council members present. So I'll go down the roll. You'll just indicate if you're here on the call. Councilmember Josh McCabe?
Here.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Here.
Mayor Protem Priest?
Sorry, here.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoskey?
Here.
Councilmember Easton?
Hello.
And then staff, we have President Cynthia Northrup, city administrator. And then she, Denveri, city secretary. Then Carvin Adson, city attorney.
I'm here.
Do I have any other department heads on the line?
Yes, ma'am. There's Sean Densmore and Kristy Adams.
Thank you. All right, we have a quorum of council members present, so we'll move on to the public presentation and input. And I'll ask the city secretary if we've had any submissions by the deadline.
I did not receive any requests, ma'am.
Thank you. I think we're getting a lot of feedback, so if you could mute your phone unless you need to speak, that would help. All right, announcements from mayor and council members. I do not have any announcements at this time. Are there any council members that have any announcements? Councilmember Easton?
Yes, it's come to my attention that Roland Coolman has not reapplied to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he has done a wonderful job and demonstrated that he is a servant of the people. And selflessly gave of himself and did a fantastic job. And I want to say thank you, Roland, for everything you've done.
Yes, thank you. Any other announcements from council? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. All items under this section are recommended for approval for the consent agenda. These items are of a routine nature and require only brief deliberation by council. Council reserves the right to remove any item on the consent agenda for further deliberation. We have the minutes of the city council regular session dated June 25, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Easton? Mayor Protem?
So moved.
I make a motion, we approve the consent items.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the motion. I'll go down the roll for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Onto the monthly staff reports, we have the departments Administration, Building and Development, Fire Rescue, Municipal Court, Police, and Public Works. We have the boards, the Parks Master Planning Steering Committee, and the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Do we need to discuss any of these? If not, we'll move on to regular agenda, old business. Agenda item D, update discussion and any necessary action regarding latest developments for COVID-19 and mitigation efforts and actions within the city. I included this on here just as a placeholder to give you an update. We shared in your council packet the latest order from the governor regarding wearing of masks and then the exceptions when you're not required to wear a mask. We have worked through all our departments to identify and instruct our staff on proper procedures. So we feel like we've gotten that. We're compliant with the governor's order. We're also distributing supplies to the various departments for sanitation, hand sanitizer, things to keep our staff safe, to keep the public safe. You'll notice if you go in City Hall or the PD or the fire station lobbies, we've put in touchless hand sanitizer stations for people to utilize when they come in and touch the various surfaces. So other than that, that's really all I have to update on. We are waiting to see if the governor extends his waiver of the open meeting requirement so we can continue our virtual meetings. We hope to have something, if not tomorrow, by Monday, we'll have some indication of whether he's going to extend that or not. So at this time, unless he extends that, we will hold an in-person meeting at the end of July. If he extends it, we'll continue with our virtual meetings. So that's all I have on that update. Any questions, concerns about opening what we're doing? Councilmember Easton?
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that wearing your mask and observing social distancing and keeping your hands clean, this is not an imposition that's being forced on people. This is a sign of respect for your fellow man and concern for the people that you visit and the people that you see. Please, don't fight this. I mean, recognize that you're helping people. It's okay. It's not a sign of weakness to actually help others and be respectful of others. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the COVID issue and what we're doing at the city level? If not, we'll go on to item E, update discussion and any necessary action regarding the municipal complex renovation project. Just as a quick update, I believe we have Kim Doughty on the line. So we've gotten paperwork back to her that council approved at the last meeting. The project funding committee has met to identify alternative sources of funding. And so we've got a plan together and we'll meet again. That committee will meet next week with some more ideas. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring more information to council on some proposals on the funding side for the municipal complex. City Administrator, do you have anything to add on that project?
No, I don't. I mean, I don't know if Kim is on. I know she and her team were out here, I believe it was yesterday, looking at the community center and, you know, beginning that project, so. Kim, are you on the line?
I am, Cynthia. We were out and we did our survey. We do have background drawings of the current facility already drawn up. So starting in the morning, we are going to be doing a preliminary conceptual design for the community center, senior center. So we will have that hopefully back to the city no later than the first of next week for staff to review to see if we are all on the same page with that design so we can keep moving forward and play catch-up so we can make sure we have this in the same documents as we do for the City Hall package. As well as, we are also putting together a finished package for City Hall and the community center. So as soon as we get that ready and we're comfortable with something to present to staff, we will be doing that. And on the floor plans, as soon as we get these done and approved, we will move forward with rendering just so that you guys can have this out and ready to go for your bond presentation. So hopefully, by the end of July, first week of August, we will be ready to go with all of that full package.
Thanks for that update. Kim, does anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, thanks for being on the line, Kim. We'll bring some more information to you at the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item F, update discussion and any necessary action regarding Eastside Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion Project. We do have, I believe, someone from Kimberly Horn on the line. City Administrator, just a quick update on where we're at on that project.
Yeah, and I think Jeff James was on the line. We did get the construction documents and advertising. We're advertising this week and next week with those. The pre-bid meeting is scheduled to be July 22, and it will be virtual. And we'll have that information out. It is already out in the ads. The bid opening will then be August 4, and then the council award would be following August 13. So those documents are out there, and that is, these are the construction documents and that next step for that. They're calling it the Equalization Basin Project. Jeff James, are you on the phone?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, yes, there you are.
All that's correct. So the virtual bidding is going well. We've been bidding projects like that during COVID, and we've not experienced any, you know, any issues with that, with contractors submitting and communicating. So we're not anticipating any problems with your project either.
Good to hear. Any questions from council or staff on that project? All right, going on to item G, update discussion and any necessary action regarding the Parks Master Plan Project. City Administrator is going to give us an update on where we're at on that project.
Sure, the Master Steering Committee met, and they received the survey results and some other information from the UTA group. And the next steps to the public input is really kind of Plan B because of COVID. So it's going to be focus groups, and they are underway. We're advertising on Facebook and on the city's website. The members of the steering committee are reaching out to their respective areas, identifying folks that may want to serve on a focus group. It's a one-time event. It's an hour long. And that's going to take place between July 24 and August 9. And then the team, the UTA team, will take that information and start wrapping up this project and bringing back some plans and goals for the future out of this entire process.
Any questions from council on that particular project? All right, if no questions, we'll go on to item H, discussion regarding proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. It's not an action item for tonight. It's just an opportunity if council has any additional input in our planning for the budget. We are in a holding pattern right now, waiting for the final certified tax roll from the appraisal district, which will get, July 25 is the date that we're supposed to receive it by. So until we get those numbers, we won't do a whole lot of transitioning of anything unless council directs us to change something. We do have some notes, questions that were brought up at the last council meeting. Those will be addressed as we put together the next revised proposed budget for council to consider on July 30. Mr. Easton?
Does this current budget reflect our discussion about the $40,000 for the design of the facelift on the firehouse and the community center?
No, not yet. That's one of the items that we have to include. That's one of the notes to update. So we, once we get the tax, final tax numbers, we'll be able to tell where we're going to land with property tax and then identify, you know, if we have any additional revenue from that or if we need to reevaluate some of the lineups that we currently have in there. But that is on our list to include. Right, anything else from any of the council members? Right, if not, we'll go on to item I, discussion and any necessary action regarding a resolution implementing a city council education training policy. Based on previous input from the council on this topic, the city attorney drafted a resolution, which you have in your packet, and the city administrator is working in conjunction with the city attorney on proposed training items. So I'll turn it over to her for a little more information.
Well, yes, this is what Carvin has put together, and this is step one. And if you look at some of the topics down there, it's important to note that obviously those are some key topics, but we're going to be expanding those. And I've sent out some emails to you all regarding that. I still need to hear back from several of you on kind of what you're, what areas you're interested in because there's a lot of different training out there. We are putting together a council orientation booklet as well as a commission and board member orientation booklet and hope to have those ready to present to you for your review. Hopefully, within the next 30 days, trying to really do our due diligence and make sure we've got some good information in there and good resources. So that's kind of where we're at with that. This is the first step with the resolution here.
Thank you. Councilmember Easton?
First of all, Mr. Atkins, Cynthia, thank you for pursuing this. As I read through the resolution, I kind of have an objection to the word encouraged. In section one of the resolution, says city council members are encouraged to seek professional development training. Can we put something more meaty, more forceful to to forcefully encourage council people to take this training? Because I look at the list of training, A through H listed, wonderful topics there. Each and every one of those topics is something that every councilman should be, or every councilperson should be trained on annually. Right? The idea of doing this quarterly is very good. And I'm looking at what's three, six, seven, eight. We could do two training sessions a quarter and just do that every year. And so tell me, Carvin, can we get something a little more?
Oh, yeah, I could add the word "shall." I could take out "encourage" and just make it a "you shall."
Well, that would be my preference.
It's just what the council wants to do and how tough you want to be on each other. I didn't, I borrowed that actually from some other statutory language regarding some other governmental entities. And I honestly, I cribbed that language and tried to apply it to our situation. So depending on how, you know, how strict you want to be, what kind of penalties you want to impose. And then honestly, also, I would be remiss if I didn't suggest you need to watch the budget too. How much are you gonna, how much time are you going to require staff to prepare for this? Who do you want to give the training? You know, those kinds of things too. So I told Cynthia that I wanted this to be a starting place for you guys to have something to kind of look at and then hang your thoughts on it. I don't presume that this is the final document by any means.
So again, the eight topics there, I love all eight. For anyone on the phone that doesn't have access, may I read the eight?
That's fine.
A, statutory authority governing the operations of a Texas type A general law city, just the basics. B, the various departments and functions of the city around. C, process for establishing and monitoring the city's budget. D, process requirements of the auditing of the city's financial books and records. E, requirements of any rules governing procurement of goods and services by the city. F, requirements of the open meetings law. G, requirements of the Public Information Act. And H, requirements of relevant conflicts of interest laws and city policies governed same. All of those are valuable. All of those we need to make certain that every councilperson, every mayor.
I ain't got something here?
Of course.
Well, I got no heartburn with the list of topics. But what I would object to is making this some kind of mandatory language in this thing because you got to remember, everybody that serves the city does so as a volunteer. And everybody's time is precious. And if you start trying to impose sanctions or some kind of penalties or make it mandatory, then we have a hard enough time finding other people to help serve on the city council and in all city functions. And people are going to balk at that, and they're going to say, "Man, I ain't got time for that stuff." So you try to start making things mandatory, then down the road, other good ideas come up and other people are going to say, "Oh, that sounds great." But, you know, people only have so much time, and making it voluntary is going to be a requirement for me.
That's an excellent point, Kenny. You're right. We're not paid. We all have jobs. We all have things we need to be doing. With that said, and I can't disagree with Kenny, or maybe highly encouraged, or "Ankins" is a wonderful word, Smith. Not mandatory, obviously, but.
The state law sets the requirements for holding office, so obviously, we can't change that. And then there are also, the state statute governing type A cities controls, you know, how members of the council could be removed or how they might be disqualified. So we really can't change those kinds of requirements. But we can add, you know, some general guidelines, and we can certainly make it available. And if you want to instruct the staff to prepare quarterly training to be available, then it's just a matter of, you know, do you do it during council sessions? Do you hold work sessions? Do you have a special meeting for it? So those are things that you need to consider how you would provide it.
One of the things I imagined, Carvin, was someday when we have an auditorium in which we can have very large assemblies, who can make this available to the general public. Anyone from the general public wants to know how this, you know, how these things are done, of course, be welcome.
I was going to ask, could you speak up a bit? It's hard hearing you. Speak up a bit because it is hard hearing you.
I can speak up as much as you like. Is that loud enough?
A little bit higher.
Okay, I've never had that request. Certainly, I can speak up.
Can't hear Sam?
What I was saying is, I would like things to be in some type of public fashion where anyone in the city would be available. We could come, listen, and participate. So of those topics, there's nothing, I don't want to loop anyone, and I think it would be wonderful if everyone understood, you know, like conflicts of interest.
A lot of those things, we could create, you know, we could make, we could record them. Cynthia and I talked a little bit about that. We could make them available. Some of it's just a matter of keeping them up to date. But, you know, every couple of years, you're going to have to go back through there and sort of update them. But there's no reason you couldn't have a training session that the public's invited, all the different commission members are invited. And, you know, we can figure ways to make those training sessions relevant and hopefully not too, I want to say boring, but that's the lawyer in me. Want to keep them informative and not too tough of a problem to come attend. Certainly for the commissions and the volunteers, the volunteer besides the council itself, you can impose those kinds of requirements on folks. If you choose to make that a condition of serving, that's something you can choose to do. But again, as has been stated, you don't want to make it so tough that you drive off all those potential volunteers in your community.
That's right.
Yeah, I would think if this is a quarterly, you know, offering that, you know, if we plan 30 minutes to maybe an hour, depending on the topic, or maybe we do two topics, would be sufficient time, you know, because that would be maybe four years, four hours in a year's time of topics. And if we do supplemental videos and things that people could do in their own time, or maybe if there's more detail that they want to get into, those videos could supplement, you know, a 30-minute, hour training once a quarter, and we do it the same night as the council meeting, as a workshop before the council meeting maybe, that might work with everyone's schedule and not overtax people. Mayor Protem?
Just like to say that I like the idea of offering it to the public and strongly encouraging council members and chairmans of our different committees because the learning curve for those topics, just by having the experience of being on the city council, it takes a while to figure it out. It's complicated on how we behave and what we say and how we go about. And so as we look for the general public who are just interested in what goes on and they want that accountability, that's one thing. But it also helps those that are thinking about running for city council, thinking about running for mayor, thinking about being a chairperson for someone of our committees. If they already have an idea of what those things are and how they are applicable to the, to city government, I think it's, they're more educated as to come into that position if we offer that at different times. I just think it's important.
It is important, and many people come in not of these basic topics. And it does require time to learn. I mean, just establishing and monitoring the city's budget, that in and of itself, you know, an hour would not be sufficient to give someone who was really interested in the intricacies of that. You know, that's something over time you'll learn. But offering this, I think, I think is the right track that we're getting on is to be offering this to everybody who may be interested, who's currently serving. That betters our talent overall and the quality of service that people are able to provide to the city. So council, are we okay with the resolution as is? Leaving section one, are encouraged as opposed to shall? Is that the general consensus with all the council members? That we don't want to require it and not have such firm language in that section?
It is for me.
Yes. I don't want to discourage people from.
Okay, so with that being said, do we have a motion to dash oh seven?
I'll make a motion that we.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoskey. Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember Easton, I think I saw the hand there first. All right, we have a motion, a second to approve resolution. Let's go down the roll for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCoskey? Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, on to item J, discussion and any necessary action regarding agreement for website services. The city administrator's been working on this, so I will turn it over to her for any questions on the agreement and the proposed project.
Thank you, Mayor. You have the information in front of you, council members. The city attorney has reviewed this, the process. And we talked about this, bringing back the contract to you to approve. And so it's really ready to go. It's going, they're going to start work on this. It is a template site, so the implementation and development of it should probably, instead of, you know, 30 to 90 days, probably looks like 30 to 60 days. And they are breaking down the payment for 500 down. And then in the next budget year, it would be a certain amount at the end of October and then a certain amount later on in the year, at the end of, at the end of this year, December. Keep in mind that it will already be up and live by that time. So we definitely won't be paying the bulk of the contract until the, you know, the site will be live. So really excited about the project we've been doing, getting some content ready, loading content onto the website. It's gonna be easier to migrate once we get, you know, up and running and getting some other things ready. I think I've sent emails to you guys about getting pictures done and IOs done for the mayor and council. We're doing that at the staff level as well. So we're excited to get this website up and running and get information out there that's more easily discoverable and more eye pleasing to the constituents out there.
Thank you. This has definitely been a project that's long overdue. So we are so glad to see staff taking the lead in improving this area of our communications with everyone. Any questions from council members on the agreement or on the project? If there aren't any questions, do I have a motion to approve the agreement? A motion from Councilmember McCauskey?
Make a motion that we go ahead with the web design as described here in the draft document.
Thank you. And then the second, I see a hand there. Councilmember Easton? All right, let's go for a vote. We'll go down the roll. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye. Was that loud enough? Aye.
All right. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to item K, discussion and any necessary action regarding agreement for telephone and internet services. Again, the city administrator's been working on this one as well to identify some cost savings and some better options for our needs for the city. So I'll turn it over to her for this one as well.
Well, again, you guys authorized us to negotiate the contract. We've given that to Carvin to review and we're excited to start this process. As of course, it's going to be, once assuming you all approve the contract, the engineer, site onsite engineer will come out from CenturyLink and begin the process of determining connection to the fiber that's in the area for these buildings. They've already affirmed that the fiber is there and we should be, that can take anywhere from, again, 60 to 90 days before this is going live.
Right. Any questions, comments from council members on this? Hey, do I have a motion to approve the agreement for telephone and internet services? All right, Councilmember Easton, I see a hand. Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember McCauskey?
Yeah, second it.
Okay, thank you. We'll go for a vote down the roll. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, on to regular agenda, new business. Item L, discussion and any necessary action regarding appointment for expiring seats on Parks and Recreation Board. There are two seats. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular seats and one alternate for two-year terms. So we'll do Parks and Rec first. We have two seats that are open and in your packet, you were given copies of applicants. I believe the only applications that we received were from Kathy Coffey and Deborah Poolman. Am I missing the applications? No, okay. So we have two applicants, so two open seats. Any comments, questions? Do you want to see if any of the applicants are on the line? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve the two applicants for the two seats? Councilmember Easton?
Yes, I have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that, Crenshaw.
Councilmember Crenshaw, thank you. All right, so we have a motion in a second. We'll go for a vote and go down the roll. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
Right, motion carries that item. Onto planning and zoning. So for planning and zoning, we have three open seats and one alternate seat is open. We have several applicants. We have six in total. So I'll go down the list real quick of who the applicants are. Stephen Knight, Kristi Narin, Joanne Wilson, Robert Coleman, Christie King, and Patricia Mitchell. So for P and C, several years ago, we created the alternate positions. And so the normal process has been to move alternates up if a position opens and if the alternates are interested in serving in a full position. That's been the process in the past. You received in your packets and recommendations from staff to continue to follow that process. So we're putting that before you now on this. As far as the applicants, Stephen Knight has been on the P and C. Kristi Narin has been on the P and C. Joanne Wilson has been alternate number two. Robert Coleman has been alternate number one. Christie King is a new applicant and Patricia Mitchell is a new applicant. Have I missed any of the applicants? Are there any additional ones?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna put it to council. Do you have any comments, questions? Councilmember Easton?
You're muted.
No wonder Leanne couldn't hear me. Mr. Coleman has done a fine job serving as the first alternate. Request move to a regular commissioner position. I would like to respect that. Or though, because Christie King lives in Chisholm and I don't believe we've ever had someone from Chisholm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. What I have is, alternate position does come up and is used. Proposed for discussion, go ahead and accepting Steve Knight and Kristi Narin's applications. Coleman's to be moved up as a regular commissioner and accepting Christie King as the first alternate. Discussion, be focused on that, guys.
Is anyone having trouble hearing Councilmember Easton?
Yeah.
Cutting in and out. It's making a lot of noise.
Wow. Let me see what I can do. Can you hear me better now? Is that better?
I mean, we can hear you. It's just somebody that's using an iPad has a lot of background voice and it keeps cutting in and out.
Let me, I think the air conditioner kicked on here at the community center. Hold on, it might be me.
Okay, I will repeat what I said. I'd like to propose for discussion. I'm not making a motion yet. Steve Knight and Kristi Narin, who retain their positions on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Coleman has done a fine job as the first alternate when he, his opportunity has come up to move him to the regular commissioner spot. Christie King being from Chisholm and the, to make sure we have, I'm not sure we've ever had someone from Chisholm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And move her as the first alternate and of course, to retain Joanne Wilson as the second alternate. It's my proposition.
I'm with Sam on this one, looking at Ms. King's application. She's got a lot of experience on several different committees, long-range committees, framework committees. I think with everything we have going on with all our steering committees, all the new business, but housing developments coming in, I think she'd be a great asset as alternate number one should she need to take over some of my spots. So I'm with Sam on those recommendations.
I'll agree with Sam on those recommendations also.
Okay, so, Number Easton, is that a motion that you're making or is that discussion? I don't think we can hear you.
I tried changing microphones. That didn't help?
No.
Is that better now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I intended that for discussion, but if there seems to be no further discussion or other propositions, then I shall make that as a motion. Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay. One, retain Steve Knight and Kristi Narin and Joanne Wilson in their current positions. Okay, move Robert Coleman into a regular commissioner position and then Christie King as the first alternate.
Okay, so we have a motion and who's seconded it? I'm sorry, the volume was a little low.
Josh, I don't know if y'all can see my video. I've been raising my hand a while, but I don't hear nothing.
I'm sorry, my screen is small and so if I don't see your hand, please, please voice that you're raising your hand. Apologize for that.
No worries.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. We'll go to the roll for a vote. We'll start with Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries on that one. All right, we will move on to item M. Discussion and any necessary action regarding agreement for water rate and source study. In your packet, you have a copy of a proposal from Kim Lee Horn, who are the city engineers. So I will turn this over to Jeff James and the city administrator on the water rate study and the source water study and also Sean Denzmore's on the line on what these projects would be and why they are important to complete these projects.
Michelle, could I ask a question?
Who is this?
I'm sorry, this is Joanne. What is my period of time for second alternate since you didn't move me to first alternate? Do I have two years still?
Yes, ma'am. It's two years for yours since you were up this year.
Right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, item M on our water rate and source study. Jeff James, are you still on the line? Did we lose him?
I thought he was still on there. But he's, did I mute him? I was trying to.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
There you are.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no worries. And I was, all I was saying was if Sean or Cynthia want to tee it up, go ahead or if you want to talk about the whole thing, I'll be glad to do that as well.
Well, I can tee it up and Sean, if you want to chime in. So the council, obviously, you all have been talking about this issue for a while. As development is growing, we need to find, we need to look at water source study and see where for the long term, where we can get water from. There are options out there and so what this does is, Kim Lee Horn has come back with a plan to look at that and to look at the water rate as well. And this is a, it's a good time to do this with the development ongoing. Of course, you've already done your water and wastewater plans and the impact fee study and the impact fees. So this is a next logical step. Sean, do you want to step in? Are you there? Are you there, Sean? If not, Jeff, if you want to, I know the term on this. I mean, it's gonna be more of a short-term contract, so it will be, you know, more like four to six months. It's not gonna be an 18-month process to do this. So I think that that's important to note. I think time is, you know, a critical factor in this study.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, everything you said was exactly right. This is the next piece for long-term planning. You know, the master plans have been done, the impact fee study is there. And the other part of this, this contract that's very important is the evaluation of your rates. And so the way we have this put together is while we're evaluating your long-term water options, then Chris Eckert will be doing your current rate evaluation. And then once we make some determinations and recommendations to you on where your long-range water will come from, after that gets done, then the second phase of his work, which isn't included in this, will then be to help you identify what the rate structure needs to look like to support that long-range water plan. So I think as far as preparing for current development and then future development, this will be just another important piece that the council's taken to ensure that you're gonna have water long-term for the citizens' home.
All right, so a question council may have on this proposal. All right, so, a question council may have on this proposal. The project total for both pieces is $65,000. We did include that in our current year budget. That's one of the projects we've been waiting to get started on. Wanted to bring this to you. Are there any questions for Jeff or any questions in general about why we need to move forward with this project? Okay, if there aren't any questions, we would entertain a motion to approve the agreement for the water rate and source study.
I will make that motion that we approve that rate study.
All right, Mr. Crenshaw? Thank you. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All right, which one of you wants it? I think it was a tie.
Sure, I'll take it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember McCabe on the second. All right, so let's go down the roll for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, on to Item N, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Presentation of the List of City Inventory Assets as Required by Section 1.20.045. You were given a copy of the assets that each department is reporting, and just as a formality, we present that to you under ordinance, and if there aren't any questions on that, would entertain a motion to accept the inventory.
This is Josh. I just had a quick question on this. Looking at the police department list, they have three vehicles on there, but looking at the memorandum that we also received, they've got two units in the shop.
Okay, we will need to get with about that to make sure that's included on there. So, we will check on that. So, three vehicles are on here, and you're saying three are in the shop that aren't listed?
Well, according to the memorandum, Unit 121 is in the shop for a turnover, and 125 is currently being updated, but the only thing I saw on the list was the truck, the SUV, and the Dodge that we had. I didn't see these units on 121 and 125 on the list that they provided.
Okay, let me see if I can see that in there somewhere, maybe. All right, that would be a big one to include, for sure.
The fire department has a lot of stuff.
Yes. All right, Mr. McCabe, I don't see that on there, so we will, we will get what you've left on updating that. So, do you want us to bring this back to a later meeting with those updates included before we take any action?
I think as long as we can make sure that they get on that list, I'm, I'm fine with everything else.
Okay. All right, was there anything else that anyone saw that questions on? Okay, if no questions, do I have a motion to accept with the changes to add the police vehicles that are not on here currently?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McCauskey. All right, we will go to a vote since we have a motion in a second. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Item O, Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Ordinance for Quarterly Budget Amendments for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. That's our current budget year. You were given a copy of the staff amendments today. It was emailed to you. Any questions on those amendments?
Is this, is this a net zero change?
It is, with the exception of, there's a notation at the bottom that the city council approved using $21,200 from the general fund savings to cover the emergency sewer repairs on Old Mill Road, and so if you added up that far right column, the net increase/decrease, you would see that it is not zero, it's $21,200, because we're pulling that out of savings. We're not taking it from a current budget item. So, other than that disclaimer which is noted, it does net to zero.
Thank you.
All right, any, any other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept it.
All right, we have a motion to accept. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Councilmember McCabe, thank you. All right, motion in a second. We'll go for a vote. We'll start with Councilmember McCabe.
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, our last item is future agenda items. Do we have any that we need to make a note of at this time? All right, as always, if you do have a future agenda item, you can email to the administrator or city secretary for inclusion in future meetings. On to adjourn, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You have it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember McCabe. Do I have a second on that motion? Councilmember Easton? All right, motion in a second. We'll go down the roll for a vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember McCauskey?
Aye.
Councilmember Easton?
Aye, and it's the first time we've had a meeting in under an hour, in quite a while.
Awesome. It is 7:28 PM. We will adjourn our meeting, everyone who are attending.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.